Economic Development Corporation to be held Thursday, November the fourth, November sixth, two thousand and twenty-five at six P. M. In the council chambers of the Brookshire Municipal Building, forty twenty-nine Fifth Street, Brookshire, Texas, for the purpose of considering the following agenda items. Can we have a prayer?
God rest him, please.
Thank you, Heavenly Father, for the many blessings that they have bestowed upon us. Thank you for this gathering. Father, please give us the intestinal fortitude to make good decisions that is good for this community. And as we leave this place and head to other homesite, please give us traveling grace in these things you want to say. Amen.
Amen.
The President of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God and the physical, which is every team and justice for all.
Ms. Beatrice, can we get a roll call?
President Eric Green. Vice President Sidney Sodey.
Present.
Secretary Theresa Markle-Cookar.
Present.
Director of the staff.
Present.
Director of the executive.
Present.
Director of the fraud ruling.
Present.
Director of the camera.
Thank you. So there's no public comments. Agenda item six, consent agenda, approval of the B E D C minutes for October the second, two thousand and twenty-five, and October financial report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So for the October financial report, we have a revenue of one hundred and six thousand, expenses of eleven thousand, twelve payments for that month, um, one thousand six hundred due for the credit card balance, and then there's the follow-up answers towards the end of the financial packets that we, that I was able to follow up from the last meeting. Oh, and a special note, this is the start of the new fiscal year.
Yes.
Thank you. Are we entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the B E D C minutes for October the second, two thousand and twenty-five, and also to approve the October financial report.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, all.
You're welcome.
Agenda item number seven, easy fiber presentation, Mr. Tim.
Unfortunately, couldn't make it today. They're going to come back. Their business development person wasn't able to make it to present, so if we can remove that to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number eight, discussion and possible action to approve joining the Waller County Economic Development Partnership, W C E D P. Board will discuss an executive. Next item, agenda item number nine.
Go up to nine or the end?
At the end.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We'll just keep moving along.
We'll have a few more. Agenda item number nine, discussion and possible action to replace eh, the Welcome Rock at F M three fifty-nine and Highway ninety.
So, good evening, board. Um, one of the projects that was on the type V projects for the E D C for this upcoming fiscal year was replacing the Welcome Rock. And so what we've done is we went out and, um, solicited three quotes, and you have them in front of you. One of the quotes is from the Byboard representative. Pull that out right quick. Byboard representative, which is Preferred Facilities Group. They're doing some work with this here, uh, but I figured I'd get a Byboard quote, which is significantly higher than, um, some of the ones that you'll see there. And the one that you see from Southwest Monument and Sign, this is a direct quote from the, the individuals that, that originally put us, the, the rock up. So we wanted to make sure that we, we received the quote from them, and that would, that's what you see in front of you. And then the first bid there, um, it is from Bedrock Builders. And so we, here we have, uh, Mr. Corey here today. He was one of the representatives, the one to come and speak on behalf of his organization, his company, and the product. And if you don't mind, I'd give him a couple of minutes to speak.
Good evening. Um, I did bring a sample of our, of our material. Um, if, uh, Mr. Batista has given you at least some of the specifics, specifics of our bid. I have, um...
I need the cardinal thing.
I'm not printing enough of these, but it sounds like you, it looks like you guys have some anyways, but, uh...
Yes.
So I have, I have this, if anybody else would like to see it. Um, but we have done a numerous, uh, number of projects, at least around the country, um, including in the state as well. Uh, some can significantly larger than the one that Mr. Batista and I have been talking about. Uh, but specifically, we use a cultured stone, which basically we offer a lifetime warranty for with regards to disintegration, decay, rot. Um, we actually make the stones, right? We actually make it. So with our, with our, with these hands is basically how it's actually going to be made. But, um, we, because of the fact that we are actually making it, we can literally make it any shape, any size, any color, which is why at least what you probably have in front of you is, um, a really, that was just kind of a sampling of a variety of different types of ways that we could potentially do this boulder. Another thing that I had been talking about with Mr. Batista was not only can we make the stone exactly to whatever specification that you're looking for, uh, but we could actually embed other types of things into it. We noticed that the specific boulder that you guys are wanting to replace, the one that was run over or, or destroyed, it's right next to the road. And so what I was talking to my, Mr. Batista about was maybe embedding certain plaques, aluminum plaques, that either have, uh, the city's, City of Brookshire's logo, even, um, even logo of Waller County. There's a variety of different things that we could effectively place into it. So, like I said, I, I really want to make sure that I stress the ability to be able to customize exactly what it is that you guys are looking for. So, and, um, and obviously with our lifetime warranty, it's, uh, definitely a little bit of a hard proposition to beat, in my opinion.
I have one question.
Sure.
What is the lifetime, how long will it last?
It, 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 as of now, we have boulders that are, been out in the field for well over twenty years. But like I said, it is a lifetime warranty. So I will, you know, I will, I am, I am the owner of Bedrock Boulders, so, um, I will honor, um, for as long as I'm around, um, the, the ability to, to, to at least replace and to honor that warranty, so. And like I said, I have a sampling of here, if you don't mind.
Yes.
So forgive the, uh, the religious connotation here, but I figured it's probably not too, too offensive. This is a very heavy stone. You're welcome to pick it up. Move it around. It is a very, like I said, it's a very, very heavy stone. Uh, so imagine this, ten feet wide, sixteen inches thick, and now we're starting to talk about seven, eight thousand pounds of, of material. So, um, something that we're proud of?
This would be the width?
No, 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 no. This is just a sampling of the material.
Okay.
So the, 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 the size of the, uh, stone that Mr. Batista and I have been talking about is ten feet wide, um, I believe six feet tall, and probably about...
Sixteen inches.
Sixteen inches thick. So that, it is a, uh, si, like I said, it is probably close to eight, nine thousand pounds, uh, what we would actually be constructing for you, so. But yeah, that, if they're, it's, it's, uh, like I said, we, we, we have a lot of applications. We do a lot of stuff with ranches. Uh, we work with a lot of, um, commercial properties. We've actually donated a large monument to the Houston Food Bank. We, we believe in being active in the community, so, um, but obviously something like this is, um, something that's, uh, probably one of our larger stones if we were to do this, so. Uh, are there any questions?
So you're saying this is a man-made stone?
It is, it is. The primary material of this is sand.
Is what?
Is sand. So what we typically do in terms of making this is, uh, we actually combine this with a tiny bit of Portland cement, but what we do is that we have a formula that we pour in while we're making it, which allows us to have different colors, it allows us to have different, um, options. And basically, um, what that formula does is it pushes out all the water and the air, and it basically makes the material extremely, extremely dense and hard. So the closest... The close, the closest rep to this is probably granite. And when I say that, we are in a number of cemeteries, right? We actually make headstones as well. So this, the, the long-lasting aspect of this, we don't look at this in years, we look at this in decades, right? As far as how long this thing will last. But yeah, it is, but it is man-made. We don't shy away from that. And I am a Houston-based business, right? I'm, I'm local, local boy, Houston-born and bred, so. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Batista?
Thank you.
May I, Madam President?
Yes.
What happened to her, I was saying?
It was hit, it was hit by a car.
And we found out who did it?
Um, I do believe we did. What I was, um, informed was that they didn't have insurance.
And we didn't keep the car? Back to court.
Presenting questions.
They just hit it and left him.
No, they didn't let, they got told. Matter of fact, I seen the lady that hit it. She had a flat tire. Like I said, tore the front tire off a car. We saw it parked on the side of the road there with a wreck coming to it. But that was...
No compensation?
None at all, yes, sir.
Well, I thought she would have been, because I'm not...
I asked, I also asked if it was, um, if it was insured through T M L, maybe, you know, property, but it was not. Yeah, I know, it was just a joke.
At least the lady walked away, so that's a good side of it.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
I was gonna say, is that something maybe we should possibly think about considering? Insurance on that project?
I don't know if we can. It's not that type of property, I believe.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, really, I, I, what kind of total cost are we talking about here?
Uh, that, that, that one may be under ten thousand.
Yeah, I just, I don't think it would be wor, at the end of the day, you're going to spend as much on a deductible and the, just the premium, so.
Agenda, any more questions?
Do we, uh, make a motion with, for any of these, or, you know, um, attorney? This is a type B project, and I'm not sure it, it was on the E D C's capital project for this upcoming fiscal year, um, but I don't know about any, uh, public hearings or notices. These have not happened. They're just making, um...
I think to instruct us to start the process of getting the designated as a project properly.
Yes, sir.
Y'all are on board?
All in the team, the motion?
I make a motion that we allow the attorneys to go ahead and designate to start, um...
This project as a type P, D B project.
Type B project.
Yes.
Say, oh, get seconded?
I second that not motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Agenda item number ten, discussion and possible action to purchase professional attire for B E D C staff and board.
Good evening again, and you don't have a rendering in front of you, but board member here, Stamps, has a perfect example of, of what the shirts would be like. So if you'd like to model it for us, sir, we can, uh, select different colors, uh, identify, identify what's, what's going on there. And then for, for the ladies, have the, the women cut as well if it, because it's going to be a button-up shirt, or a polo, however you all, uh, like.
Ben is a young man.
Yes, sir.
You gonna bring the cemetery to him to measure us?
He said he wanted tailor-made, yes, sir, I understand.
Everyone want to get measured for sizes first before we stand, place to order?
Well, at least they let that be part of the process.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Not just order.
Yeah, I think...
Because different fashion, uh, cut differently.
That's exactly correct.
Ms. Quinlan was saying something about that.
I think he's, I think he's more speaking.
Bring somebody out here and measure me. I'm a plus size. Where's Woodbury?
Right here, Seeley, Seeley.
Okay. Yeah, that's easy.
Yes, sir. We'll get you the information.
I, I do have one question. So is this the only, can I touch it? Is this the only fabric that...
For those types of shirt, um, probably not. We, we were looking for some of the dry fit that you were looking at as well, just like this, yes, ma'am.
I think we discussed that last time.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. So we'll consider the dry fit and put that option on there as well.
Okay. All in attain the motion?
I make a motion that we approve to purchase professional attire for the B E C staff and board members.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Agenda item number twelve, project managers' report, Mr. Batista.
Moving along, and I'm, I'll spend more of the time on, on current projects, because potential projects are just those, they're potential projects. So, uh, current projects, I want to let you all know that Nationwide Trailers is actually here. The mayor signed a C O for them just the other day, but they are coming back to us for, um, they came back to us for another pre-develop meeting. What they're trying to do is actually bring a storefront, so bring, uh, building, retail, um, selling trailers throughout the, this area. So they're, they're actually coming. Ace Hometown Hardware, their permit is going through, um, Civil Engineering right now, so everything looks, looks well from their perspective. They're going through the Drainage District and the Water District as well. So their permit's moving along swiftly. Quick Trip, um, in discussion with them as well. They have, um, a variance coming up real soon, I believe, on the city council meeting. So once that review is complete, then Quick Trip will be able to start their construction process. I put these next two on there, Milk and Brew Coffee Shop. So if you might have known, on Thirteenth Street, um, it's been sitting, um, a little vacant for quite some time, construction has stopped. I did speak to the owners, um, yeah, just last week, and so they were there doing some things. I think their delay had to do with, um, what he mentioned, what Center Point told them was going to delay about six months or so. Their permit must have went a little faster, so now they're starting back up. They had been speaking with Ms. Beatrice this week, this week or the past, and so, um, they're going to start their, continue their construction, I should say. So you'll see some movement there real soon. And then Ma Dentis is there in the, um, right off of Eleventh Street and three fifty-nine. They're moving along, uh, pretty quickly as well. They, um, had inspections done, so hopefully they'll get their C O as well real quickly. And then I have these next three, which is the Brown Track. You all know, um, it looks like the property's sold, but they haven't really told us if the project's going to come through or not, so we'll just keep it on here as a current project. These next two, three fifty-nine Falcon Business Warehouses, again, there's, they have a permit application on file, but it hasn't moved quite far in terms of, um, another, an additional review from their side. And then Fifth Street Logistics and Distribution Warehouses, we did put a stop on that project, um, because of the, they had a detention permit, but not a city permit at the time. So now they're, um, working with city engineer to complete their process in order to move forward with the construction. And potential projects, again, these are potential, so I won't spend too much time with them on today, but it is two on Tenth Street, um, one on Twelfth Street that we re, we have a presentation, if you can attend the city council meeting, we have those developers coming in for Twelfth Street. And then, uh, Business Park Development on Carvey, not any, any particular movement there. And then the city's still looking at property for a food truck park. And that's all I have. Any questions? I did want to share very briefly that tomorrow, um, and I think it's in your packet, the Waller Economic Development Corporation has a new director, and so they are looking to start, what are they calling, the West Side Allies, so anything west of ninety-nine in Austin and Waller County to bring the E D C corporations together and their groups of board members, uh, just to have some discussions and talk about new developments in the area. So you'll see that tomorrow it'll be in Waller at Cielito Lindo, um, at twelve P. M. If anyone would like to join, I'll be, I'll be going on behalf of the B E D C. That's all I have. From Waller, it was, uh, John Isom.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, John Isom.
No questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Batista. Item agenda number thirteen, future agenda items. I do have one. I would like to put up an update on the light and back on the agenda. Do you have it? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I think you're talking about more than ninety, aren't you?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Madam President, I have a unpopular recommendation, just to revisit it. I don't live in the City of Brookshire, but I do live about two miles out. Gosh, gosh, all of these truck places right in your community, it ain't gonna ever grow, and you're not concerned about that? I think it's gonna be something we need to bring before the city council to look at. Gosh, when I go to Waller to go to Pro Review, it looks so much different in that community area, and everywhere I look, there's a truck station or some kind of shack right next to residential district. When are we gonna say that's enough?
Well, we, that's one, we have zoning, we've been talking about zoning, so we're, we have that on our agenda.
Yeah, really?
Yes.
Thank God almighty. I mean, y'all live there, y'all can deal with, I said, on a hundred and ten acres, it doesn't bother me, but, gosh, your, your bedrock community that's already, it's not gonna grow, you keep putting junk, uh, beside, I'm not gonna go build a twenty thousand dollar house beside a bunch of junk. Thank you.
It's on there.
Thank you.
No, I, I, I don't have anything, not this town.
Update on the restrooms for the amputator?
I think they have it on there already.
Yes.
Nothing?
Nothing, nothing. Like I said, that, they're, they're doing the tables and lights next month, so.
Okay. Agenda item number fourteen, executive session.
Time?
The time is six twenty-four. The Virginia Econ, Economic Development Corporation will meet in closed session pursuant to Title Five, Chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code for the Purpose of Ec, Economic Development Discussions under Section five five one dot zero eight seven, consultation with legal counsel under Section five five one dot zero seven one, and deliberations on real property under Section five five one dot zero seven two.
Okay.
We're ready?
Okay. Agenda item number fifteen, discussion and possible action on executive session items if necessary. We will revisit at next meeting, December meeting. Agenda item number sixteen.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
I second.